Well, it's nine AM, so I'd like to call the October 21st, 2014 City Council Meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bush.
Here.
Solner.
Here.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Here.
Dave Line.
Here.
Hurwitz. Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's prayer will be given by Gary Gedding of Friends Church. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good morning. Shall we pray? Our kind heavenly Father, we are indeed grateful of all your many blessings. We thank you for this land in which we live, the freedoms that are ours, and the responsibilities also that come with living in such a great democracy as the United States. And I thank you for these who serve us in these chambers and throughout the community. We pray for your watchful care and protection over each one. We pray for wisdom and discernment in this chamber and the discussion and the decisions that may take place that will affect the citizens of this community. And we give you thanks for all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Next item, please.
Item four A, a proclamation for National Cyber Security Awareness Month.
Todd Davis, will you join me at the podium, please? Whereas the city of Hutchinson, Kansas recognizes that it has a vital role in identifying, protecting, and responding to cyber threats that may have significant impact to our individual and collective security and privacy, and critical infrastructure sectors are increasingly reliant on information systems to support financial services, energy, telecommunications, transportation, utilities, healthcare, and emergency response systems. And whereas the Stop Think Connect campaign has been designated as the national public awareness campaign implemented through a coalition of private companies, nonprofit and government organizations, and academic institutions aimed at increasing the understanding of cyber threats and empowering the American public to be safer and more secure online. And whereas the National Institute for Standards and Technology Cyber Security Framework and DHS's Critical Infrastructure Cyber Community, C3, voluntary program have been developed as free resources to help organizations, large and small, both public and private, implement the cybersecurity framework and improve their cyber practices through a practical approach to addressing evolving threats and challenges. Whereas maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility in which each of us has a critical role to play. And awareness of computer security essentials will improve the security of Hutchinson, Kansas information, infrastructure, and economy. And the President of the United States of America, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, the CIS Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center, the National Association of State Chief Information Officers, the Council on Cyber Security, and the National Cyber Security Allowance declared October as National Cyber Security Awareness Month. Now therefore, I, Jade Pyros DeCarvallo, Vice Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2014 as National Cyber Security Awareness Month in the city of Hutchinson and encourage all citizens to visit these sites and the Stop Think Connect campaign website, stopthinkconnect.org, to learn about cybersecurity and put that knowledge into practice in their homes, schools, workplaces, and businesses. Todd, would you like to say a few words?
If you wouldn't mind. Well, first off, I cut about four paragraphs out of this proclamation. So it was a mouthful for certain, but thank you for addressing this issue. Cybersecurity is a very important issue, and we're a member of the multi-states cybersecurity alliance. We do training with a bunch of different entities, and we've gotten materials. And I provided you with a cybersecurity calendar, which has helpful hints on it, and it's got some pictures that were created by students. And then some other materials that we got that this is what we're using at the city of Hutchinson, and we put these in break rooms, and we're going to put them on tables on, you know, different places where people congregate. And they remind people to connect with care when you connect to the internet, to review your apps carefully before just don't just put any app on your phone because your phone knows everything in the world about you. So stay up to date with your malware software and use a firewall. So those kinds of things are just good reminders for people. And this, she mentioned in the proclamation, the stopthinkconnect.org, and I recommend that you go to that website. And they stopthinkconnect.org, which is up on the screen, they have a great amount of information. So for example, here's how you can help protect your digital identity, and here's how you can get involved and get more statistical information. And this works not just for government, but it also works for private industry, it works for students. This program is really across the board. So just for example, this is their tips and advice page. You know, they'll help you keep your machine clean. They advise you on good antivirus software and malware software to use. How to protect your information. Ninety-three percent of us will be impacted this year by some sort of identity theft. If you think about Target and Home Depot and, you know, those potential losses of your identity, this will help you, you know, find out about that. How to, you know, connect with care. Don't just click on any link in an email. There's somebody, you know, in China trying to get your information. So those things, anyway, I'm going to get out of your way, but I just wanted you to know what the city of Hutchinson's doing, and I urge everybody to be really safe online, be careful. So.
Thank you so much, Todd.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Next item, please.
Item five A, oral communications from the audience.
This is the part of the meeting where we accept oral communications from the audience. If you have something you'd like to address before the council, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your remarks to five minutes or less. No takers? All right. Next item, please.
Item six A through D, consent agenda.
Is there a motion?
Let me make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented by staff.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Bush.
Yes.
Solner.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Yes. Next item, please.
Item seven A, consider Salt City Splash operating agreement with the Hutchinson Recreation Commission.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. What we have today is basically a renewal of the operating agreement between the city of Hutch and Hutchinson Recreation Commission. There really are no significant changes. This is a five-year term. Our previous one was a four-year term, so it's a one-year initial, and then four-year, four-one-year extensions beyond that. I've been very pleased with how Hutch Rec operates the pool. You know, I did thoroughly go through the contract. I think we've covered everything. It's a good relationship, and I expect that to continue. So it is my recommendation to approve the contract, and Tony from Hutch Rec is here as well. If you have any questions for either one of us, we'd be happy to answer those.
Could you tell us a little bit about how the Splash is doing in terms of its use by residents?
Tony could probably answer better as far as usage. I did indicate in my cover memo, you know, last year we subsidized about $36,000, and that will go up a little bit this year. We don't have the final report yet from Hutch Rec. They have, I think, till the end of the month to get that in. A lot of it's weather-dependent. You know, we had some cool, just a few cool days in July and August can really have an impact. So, but Tony, if you want to maybe address some of the usage patterns as well.
Promise me I wouldn't have to talk. I didn't promise. Tony Finley, Director of Hutch Rec. Attendance, as we've seen over the last seven, eight years, is declining. The report that will be submitted to the city in the next few weeks will show attendance from opening day through this year, and it is a gradual decline. Like Justin alluded to, the subsidy is going to be a little bit more this year. We're about $49,000 for the subsidy versus 38 last year. Cool days again this year contributed to that, but we've had cool days over the last 15 years as well. So we are very interested in looking at what we can do to refresh the facility and try to bring residents back to it.
Thank you.
Tony and I have discussed several times about maybe updating the master plan at the pool and trying to find some ways to generate some more excitement, get people coming back. So we do see that trend, and we're both aware of the trend and want to do what we can to hopefully correct that.
For a facility of that size, I'm surprised the subsidy isn't larger, that it's that self-sufficient.
Yeah, yeah, it's actually, in the grand scheme of things, really not a bad subsidy. Just as an example, I was in Charlotte last week for a national convention, and we toured, and it was an indoor facility, so it's a little different animal. They generated $600,000 in revenue a year, and I thought, wow, that's awesome. And then he said, that only covers half of our operating.
Oh, wow.
So one facility was operating at a $600,000 loss a year. So our 45,000 or 46,000, whatever it was, is pretty good compared to that.
Well, Hutch Rec certainly does a great job with it. Is there a motion or any further discussion?
I'd move to approve the operating agreement with the Hutchinson Recreation Commission for the Salt City Splash Aquatic Park and authorize the mayor to sign.
Is there a second?
Your turn.
I made the last motion.
I seconded the last one.
All right, second.
Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Bush.
Yes.
Solner.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Yes. Next item, please.
Item seven B, consider brush-up Hutch paint program funding of projects and volunteer coordinator position.
I'm just waiting for my slides. Good morning, Jana McCarron, I'm the Planning Director. Today I have a request for an allocation of a portion of the brush-up Hutch funds toward funding a project/volunteer coordinator position. But before I kind of summarize that request, I wanted to give you an update on the status of the brush-up Hutch paint program. I don't think, since I've been here, you guys have been informed of how we're doing on that program. Here's a graph that shows you to date, and I think there's a small error in your report. There was actually 57 houses that have been painted since 2011, when the brush-up Hutch paint program was initially implemented. And you can see there's been a steady increase. This year, we're not quite done. We have six houses still pending. So this year won't be quite as many houses as last year, but it still will be quite a few houses. It should be 21 for this year, and last year was 23, if I'm doing the math right there. As far as expenses, as I mentioned, we haven't done all of our expenses yet for this year, but we've been seeing a steady increase in the expenditures from the program. It is a new program. It's kind of hard to get awareness for the program out there to the community. The newspaper's done a good job of putting some articles in the paper on it. We're working on promotional materials. And also, our code enforcement officer is also helping us get the word out that this program's available. Just for those in the audience who may not be aware of it, it is a reimbursement program, up to $300 towards the cost of paint for a house. It has to be owner-occupied, and there are income eligibility guidelines. So you have to earn 120% or less of the average area income to qualify for the program. I just want to show you a couple of the success stories. This was a before picture, and that's the same house after the paint program. Again, a before picture. And this is the same house. I have one more. Another before. And there's an after. And we do take pictures of every house before and after, but I didn't want to take up all your time showing 57 houses, just kind of showing you a sampling of how much, how big of an improvement the paint program can make, not only to that house, but to the overall appearance of the neighborhood. So the city council has budgeted every year since 2011 about $6,000 towards the paint program. Also, we've received some contributions from outside entities, including the United Way and some private contributions. So to date, we've received $27,000 to fund the paint program, and we've spent about $15,000 of that. So we're not, we haven't been spending all of the money that we've received. And part of the issue with spending it is, if you look at the houses I'm showing you, some of them actually need some repairs. And we've been approached by some other agencies, including Interfaith Housing, the United Way, the Volunteer Center, saying, how can we get these houses in a condition that they can be painted before we spend the $300 on the paint program? And so the recommendation of the Housing Commission, it's actually one of the Housing Commission's items, as well as the Community Improvement Commission, was to fund a coordinator position that would actually train volunteers, match volunteers with houses, and hopefully get more, even more bang-for-a-buck on the dollars that the city is spending towards painting these houses. And roughly about half of the houses that have been painted have been painted by volunteers. Now here's a picture of a volunteer happily painting a house. But it is difficult matching the volunteer groups with houses. It's really not a function that city staff is performing, so this volunteer coordinator position would be doing that, would be undertaking that effort, as well as training these volunteers. Painting a house can be a little bit more difficult than what it might seem. Also wanted to show you kind of the geographic distribution of the houses that have been painted so far, and you can see, while a lot of them are in the south part of the town, there are some that are in the northern areas. And really, the paint program has been used throughout the city for reimbursements for painting houses. So the request before you is to use a portion of the already committed brush-up Hutch funds for assisting with the volunteer coordinator position. The Interfaith Housing has applied for a grant through the community foundation, which would provide the bulk of the funding for that position, but also United Way is contributing. They've asked the city to contribute, and they're also asking for private donations. So the request before you is for a total of up to $10,800. A portion of that would be for the position, and the other would be for paint reimbursements over two years, 2015 and 2016. And the Community Improvement Commission does recommend approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the request or also about the paint program.
Are there questions?
Okay, Interfaith Housing is going to run the program, correct?
Correct. And that position would be housed with Interfaith Housing.
Okay.
Would not be a city staff person.
And this is, our contribution would be contingent upon their receiving funding from all the other sources that they are trying to pull together?
Absolutely. And if they don't get the community foundation grant, they won't.
They won't pursue it?
No. I don't think they have the resources to be able to fund the position.
Okay.
I'm really excited about this position and this type of collaboration. I think it's exactly what we need, and I commend Interfaith Housing for wanting to take this on. You know, I think they keep getting more and more added to their plate because they're so good at what they do. And there's a lot of groups I've worked with, such as YP and Rotary, that I think would be interested in doing more of these projects if there was a central coordination effort. So I'm excited about this.
I agree.
Jana, what, how much? We give $300 per house for paint? Is that enough to paint a house?
Well, on most of the houses that you saw, and most of the houses we get requests more are smaller.
Right.
So yes, most of them, our average is about $270, I believe, is what we've been averaging in paint costs. But there are some larger houses that that's just not, that's not enough. Every year, we kind of evaluate the program. It used to be just $200 payment reimbursements, and we raised that in 2013 to $300 because we were seeing it wasn't enough money.
Do staff, does staff have the option of spending more than 300 if they think the house is deserving of that, or is it just $300 and that's it?
The Community Improvement Commission hasn't authorized that, but we are reevaluating the program, so that's certainly something we could look at, that if it's a larger house, maybe we could reimburse more money for it.
I just think this is one of the neat innovative programs that we've done. It really makes a big difference. You know, when you talk about what's different the code of paint can make, we see that up on the board, and when we also talk about the tens of thousands of dollars that we're spending on tearing down houses. I mean, I'd like to not be hampered by, you know, $300 when $400 or $500 will make a difference. So I'm going to support the program, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the budget adjustment as presented by staff.
I'll second. Please call the roll.
Bush.
Yes.
Solner.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Yes. Next item, please.
Item seven C, consider amendment to Siemens Development Agreement.
Good morning, Mayor Council, John Deirdreoff, City Manager. I thought I'd move from my traditional spot, since I do have an overhead here that I may need to play with. So in August of 2009, the community entered into a development agreement with, and when I say "community," it was a development agreement that involved the city, city of South Hutch, and Reno County, with Siemens for the location of the new Nessel facility in our industrial park. And you'll all remember the history of that. Over the past several weeks, the city and the chamber have been working with securing another business prospect for the industrial park location. We'll call it Project X, as we know it for now. And the development agreement that we had with Siemens back in 2009 included options for them to be able to purchase additional parcels within the park, lots, specifically lots five, two, eight, nine, 10, and 12, as you can see in your packet and up on the screen, maybe not quite as well, but that'll, we'll refer to that in just a minute. And Lot Five is something that's become very critical, not only for Project X, but also for any future projects that we might have at the park. And recently, Siemens had indicated an interest in exercising its option on Lot Five to use for its current operations. And the city and the chamber have determined through a lot of discussion that Lot Five is really very critical, not only for Project X, but again, for any other future project that we might have in the park, specifically due to its proximity and its proximity to the rail access that we've constructed in the industrial park. Siemens has agreed to assist us in facilitating Project X, or for that matter, any other project that might come along in the future, and basically releasing its option on Lot Five, which again is the very, you know, see it pointed out there, this lot right here is Lot Five. Now, they've agreed to do that with certain conditions, and I'll just summarize those conditions. First of all, a commitment for funding to construct approximately 2,200 feet of additional rail for storage for Siemens's use only, for storage and staging. To finance that, the city would commit $200,000, the chamber $100,000, Siemens $200,000, and $500,000 from KDOT. At one time, we had an estimate of about $1 million for that project. It may be a little bit higher now, but in the agreement between Siemens and KDOT, those two parties would share equally in any excess over the $1 million that we've committed here. The city would then enter into a new option agreement on the balance of the lots, two, which would be right here, I'm not doing very good with that, but two all the way up to the north there, which would basically be all of those lots. I'm not doing really this thing. Anyway, it's lots two, eight, nine, 10, and 12. And essentially, the difference between the current option there is that they would not have any obligations for construction or job creation on those lots. In the current development agreement, that requirement is in those options, that they would exercise that option and would have to construct and create jobs, creations. In this amendment, those conditions would go away. And Siemens' plan is to use initially some of those parcels for a lay-down lot that would store materials and supplies and product to facilitate their current operations. So in summary, the city is committing $200,000 towards the storage tracks to be built on Siemens property, to be used solely for Siemens's use. The city would be extending our options on those additional lots, two, eight, nine, 10, and 12, until April of 2015, is the way the agreement reads. However, we anticipate that Siemens would exercise their option fairly soon on at least a portion of those lots. Siemens would intend to use, again, as I say, this for really just storage facilities for their current operations. Reno County and city of South Hutchinson, as I mentioned, were a part of the original development agreement, so therefore they need to approve this amendment as well. City of South Hutch approved the amendment last night, and the county is dealing with that, I think, on their agenda as we speak here today. So with that, I would stand, and the city attorney has been very active and involved in negotiation of this amendment, working with Siemens attorney on that. Would stand for any questions that you might have.
Is there anyone from the chamber or Siemens?
There is not. And Jason was out of town today and indicated that he would be happy to have someone here, and actually, he was the individual that was involved in this, so I told him it really wasn't needed, so.
Well, I did have a few questions.
Sure.
Maybe you can answer them. I was hoping Jason, I didn't realize he was out of town. The current option expires in seven days, correct?
October 28th, I believe, was the exact date.
And an exercise of that current option would require a build plan and job creation?
That's correct.
And so do they have that in the wings to exercise that option?
No.
On Lot Five?
No.
Okay. So there's really no intention to create?
There was an intention, there was interest in Lot Five, I think, as a part of this whole discussion with a new project. And obviously, Siemens knows that that option was due, the deadline was coming. They indicated an interest early on in this process about some additional storage area. And we talked through that and indicated that the storage product doesn't fulfill the current development agreement language, because it does specifically talk about constructing and creating jobs. Now, basically, there could be a plan, and within two years, if that isn't perfected, then they would have the ability then to just reimburse or buy that property from the city for the $15,000, I believe, per acre, so.
Now, the lead track was never intended to be used for storage solely, or honestly, for Siemens' sole use. Wasn't it for service of the entire business park? Isn't that how we got the EDA money and all of?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the city, I mean, the city actually owns that lead track, and the lead track that runs along, you know, and was built back into the addition, the south, southern addition, is solely intended for lead track for transporting cars in and out of that facility, not for storage. Siemens has been allowed to do that because obviously there was no business to the south.
Well, and I in no way want to make any suggestion that would cause us to not have Lot Five for a new project, but I feel pretty strongly that cash and incentive should be tied to job growth. And I wouldn't mind giving it an option to purchase land at the $1 an acre, not Lot Five, you know, additional parcels, but then to offer up $200,000, and actually, I mean, it's $800,000. I just, I don't understand why we would even be considering this, honestly.
That was, I mean, I will be, I wanted, that was a surprise to me in this whole project development, but it came about, I believe, because there was concern from Siemens about storage of rail, and they would lose that because of this project, or any other project in the future. And, you know, the way the development agreement was written originally, and we can go back, you know, look at that, and maybe it wasn't as tight as it maybe should have been.
Yeah.
Because, again, as the agreement reads today, they could exercise their option, provide a plan to us, and have a couple of years to perfect that plan. And if it didn't happen, they're really not at anything other than reimbursing the city for the cost of those lots. And it does, again, take Lot Five away from Project X, which is critical, or any really future project that we would have in the park, so.
Well, there's a huge opportunity cost in losing Lot Five, and I recognize that. But is it your belief that they will try to exercise that option even though they don't really need that particular parcel for storage? I mean, they can exercise the option without a job creation and build plan.
Today, they could not, right.
In the next seven days.
If this, yeah, if this amendment is approved today, then Lot Five is basically, they've given up that option. I mean, that's ours, right. But if we didn't do anything today, the way the current agreement reads today, they would have till October 28th to exercise that option, right? That's correct.
But they're not at full capacity now. An article in the news on. But they're not at full capacity now, an article in the news on Sunday said they were at three-sixty, so there wouldn't...
I don't believe there was any intention that there would be a project that would be used solely for a lay-down yard, and that's what really kind of started this, because of the strategic location of that lot, and to be used for storage really wasn't the intent of the investment that we made in that property. With the amount of rail we've got in there, it really was not intended for storage yard, and that's why the language is written originally, that it had to be construction and job creation.
But you feel like they will, they will exercise that option on Five, if we don't provide them eight hundred thousand dollars for a new track and an option on other lots?
I believe that, I believe they would have. Paul, you've been in...
I believe they will, just to preserve that area for their future use, will they put some kind of a project together? That would be likely if this is not approved. Because they don't have to complete it for two years, and that keeps their options open.
There was always, all along, a discussion about a facility, a maintenance facility.
I remember that.
Remember that, it was like a fifty job, I believe, it's maybe located in Wichita, I'm not sure, I think it's located in Wichita now. And, you know, that certainly could be something that could be talked about, planned fairly easily, and we've had those discussions before whether it would ever happen, you know, it really wouldn't have to happen, and they would still be whole, because they would have access to Lot Five and use of that, and, but it does take that out of our equation for today and the future.
Was the development agreement written in a way that if they choose to exercise that option and provide a plan, it would then have to come before the council for approval?
It was not written in that, in that fashion, basically, just a plan for, and, you know, it's interesting when you, when you write these development agreements, because we actually put that all together even after the announcement, and a lot of, you know, most of the details were worked out, but you start putting language on paper, and looking back, would have been nice maybe to tie that down a little bit, because it's pretty loosely written, you know, what is, you know, what is job creation? It doesn't have a number, you know, what is a building? It doesn't talk about the value of that building, it just says a building with job creation. I think we all would have our opinion on that, and, you know, two jobs and a guard shack isn't, you know, what that language was intended to be for, so.
Well, again, I don't want to, I don't want to imply anything about, I don't want to hinder the ability of our community to secure new projects, and I know Lot Five is crucial for that, but I think this proposal borders on absurd, and I know that Siemens has done a tremendous amount for our community, but we've done a tremendous amount for Siemens, and I kind of feel like they're holding us hostage on this. When you say that they're, they've agreed to assist us by releasing that option, it just doesn't feel that way, it feels like...
That might have been...
They've agreed to extort us, yeah. So that's just my opinion on it, and I appreciate you answering my questions.
And your points are very valid. Any other questions?
John, just a question, once the lots to the west of the Siemens plant are exercised by Siemens, will those lots, two, eight, nine, ten, and twelve, will they then come on the tax rolls?
Yeah, yeah, they would, they would, yeah.
Yeah, they would.
There wouldn't be a lot of value.
Unless they qualify for some other exemption, yes. Pardon me? Unless they qualify for some other exemption, yes. Some other exemption, yeah. So they would be valued at X.
And without any buildings, it wouldn't be a lot of value, even if it's a lay-down yard, that's not going to add a lot of valuation to the, you know, to the land. I mean, it's, it's right now, well, tax exempt because the city owns it.
Because the city owns it, correct.
But if it's just an ag, and I don't know how they would appraise lay-down yards, I really don't know much about that, but it would go back on the tax rolls, yes.
Further discussion or questions?
I mean, I don't know that there's, I don't know if there's a lot to discuss, I mean, what we have is, we had an agreement that we wrote, I don't know, five years ago, that at the time, made sense, looked good, and here we are today, talking because we have a specific project that's going to, Project X, that if it does come to pass, will significantly benefit the workforce in our community. And unfortunately, that piece of property has to go on a specific place, and that impacts the Siemens relationship, and Siemens is doing what a very tough international corporation does, they're looking at the contract and they're holding us to it, and they're using it in a way that's to their best benefit, and at the same time, they're giving us what we need, and it's a significant price, but I think when Project X, if it does come together, I think a two hundred thousand dollar contribution will be seen as a very wise payment in order to make that project happen. So I'm going to support it, I don't know that I would use some of the strong language that you've used, I guess I'm just used to businesses being very aggressive in enforcing their rights, and they have the right to do that, and that's what they're doing.
John, are those coming out of the EOF?
Yes, yeah.
That two hundred thousand?
Yeah, we're, I mean, it's still a little bit, again, we, you know, we make these agreements, and then, you know, the devil's in the details, once we start putting together development agreements and what have you, but in this case, you know, they're, it will for sure happen, and we would pay that out of EOF, because if Project X does happen, there is going to be a need to move immediately on construction of those storage and side tracks.
And if Project X doesn't happen, and we have Lot Five freed up for our use, which is a very attractive piece of property.
And if Project X doesn't happen, then the construction of the side and storage tracks for the Siemens site would not happen immediately, that would, that would be down the road if another project came about because of KDOT's commitment to this.
Right, but the actions today opened up all those opportunities for us, which are now closed to us.
Correct.
You know, and again, as the city attorney said, if they write up a plan, submit it, then they've got two years to look at implementing it, and if they choose not to implement it, then we're having this conversation in two years. So it's...
Yeah, then, well, then they just buy the lot.
Then they would just simply buy the property.
Buy the property and go.
And we would really not have anything.
No, I mean, I understand what the implications are, I just think it's less than ideal that they would do that, but...
I understand.
It's what a good business does, I guess.
With that, with the Vice Mayor's permission, I would make a motion that we approve the agreement as presented by staff regarding the Siemens, I don't know, Siemens Development Agreement.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Bush?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
No. Next item, please.
Item eight, Report of City Officials.
John, let's start with you.
Nothing this morning.
What about you, Bob?
I really don't have anything, thank you.
Nancy?
Me either.
Everyone's easy. I just had one thing, I was wondering, John, if you could give us an update on the progress of the South Hutchinson, Hutchinson Fire Department Agreement?
Well, we, you know, we sent a letter, or the mayor sent a letter, boy, last summer, early summer, maybe July, and just really asking and requesting the opportunity to sit down at City of South Hutch to discuss fire services for the future, and that we'd like to have that meeting prior, an answer or response back on November one, which is fast approaching, we've heard nothing from the City of South Hutch on that, I need to probably reach out and find out if that's something that they're still interested in doing. You know, last I knew, they were very interested in moving forward with development and more development of their own fire, fire service operation, so that may be the direction they're going, and then we'll need to have a conversation here as to what that mutual aid agreement would in fact look like. So I'll reach out and report back to the councils to their interest in sitting down or not.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to you.
Couple things, just a reminder, October thirty-one, ten AM, we're slated to tour the animal shelter, Richard, people, ten AM at the animal shelter. On October thirtieth, I've got a couple names down to attend the Black Hills Energy Luncheon at the Town Club, and that's something they do annually, they invite city officials to just talk about their company and what's going on, I believe I've heard from a couple of you that will attend that. And again, that's October thirtieth at noon at the Town Club. If any of you haven't responded and you're interested in going, let me know, we've got time to get our names in on that, but I think generally, as long as we've got a couple people representing the city is appropriate, and I believe we have that now, so. The, just a quick reminder, I'm not sure if I told everyone about this, but the railroad tracks at Third and Washington, I had a phone call about that yesterday, and was happy to report to the gentleman that they're scheduled to be repaired on November eleventh, and through thirteen, so it'll be closed down for a three-day period there. And again, that's our operational agreement with Burlington Northern, where we pay for the materials and they do the labor, so, so that'd be a good project. And I did want to report, I read a letter to the editor in the paper this morning about the condition of twenty-third and thirty, or twenty-third to thirtieth on Waldron, twenty-third to thirtieth, and I lost the gentleman's name, but just so he's, maybe he's watching today, that that is a project that's slated to be our reconstruct project in two fifteen, so we just completed, obviously, the part from seventeenth to twenty-third, between the clinic and hospital, and then we'll be doing the next phase, twenty-third to thirtieth, in two thousand and eleven, so they'll have to put up with a little bit of the bumping and bruising that's going on apparently, and for a little while longer, so. And that's really all I had, unless the council had any other questions about any other projects.
Not all, accept a motion to recess into executive session until, what do you think, Paul?
Eleven thirty?
Eleven, eleven thirty? Okay.
They won't have to extend it.
Okey-dokey.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Bush?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.